Good evening, everyone. It is now six P M on December the sixth, twenty twenty-two. And I would like to welcome you all to this regular session of Richland County Council. This meeting will now come to order. Madam Clerk, will you please take the role?
Malinowski.
Here.
Pew.
Here.
McBride. Livingston.
Here.
Horatio.
Here.
Joe Walker.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
O'Walker.
Here.
Mackey.
Here.
English.
Present.
Newton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Before we move to the next item on the agenda, I would just like to put on the record that I did speak with Councilwoman Eva McBride. She's not feeling too well this evening, so she will not be in attendance. And Councilman Joe Walker will be in attendance electronically as our new rules permit electronic participation under certain circumstances. Next item on the agenda is item two, which is the invocation that will be provided by the Honorable Derek Pew. Councilman Pew, you recognize, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the second time that I had to pray in public in one week. And this does not mean that I'm going to seminary school. So I would ask that everybody bow your heads as we approach God. God, we'd like to thank you for this opportunity for us to convene together to handle the business of Richland County. We ask that you give us clear hearts and minds as we do our best to make decisions for our constituents. We'd like to ask all these things to your son, Christ Jesus. Amen. Could you please stand and join me with the, for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, Councilman Pew. Next item on the agenda is item four, which is the approval of the minutes. Specifically, item four A, which is the regular session from November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Any changes, additions, or deletions?
Move for approval.
All right. Just remove the properly second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take their own vote, please.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
McBride. Livingston.
Yes.
Horatio.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O'Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item four B, also approval of the minutes. Specifically, the zoning public hearing from November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Any changes, additions, or deletions? There being none.
Oh, move, Mr. Chair.
All right. It's their second.
Second.
So move to properly second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pew.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Horatio.
Yes.
Yes, or no, Councilwoman Tracy?
Yes, I thought I heard a here, and that confused me.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O'Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item five, adoption of the agenda. Are there any additions, changes, or deletions to the agenda? All right. There being none, I entertain a motion.
Oh, move, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Move to properly second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Horatio.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O'Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
But we continue. Madam Clerk, I think there are kids or children background some. Councilman Walker? Okay, he's got it muted. Okay. Next item on the agenda. That's okay. Next item on the agenda is item six, which is a report of the county attorney for executive session items. Mr. Wright, you recognized.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have one item for executive session, comprehensive council rules for legal advice, and there is no outside counsel.
We can now put that off until, I guess, the second executive session on the agenda. All right. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Next item on the agenda is item seven, which is citizens' input. This is for items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
No, Mr. Chair, no one signed up this evening.
All right. Next item on the agenda is item eight, which is also citizens' input. Must pertain to Richland County matters not on the agenda. And this is for items for which a public hearing is required or a public hearing has been scheduled cannot be addressed at this time. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have thirteen individuals that have signed up to speak this evening. I will call your name and you will come down to the mics up front. So I'm gonna call two names at a time, so just please go to either mic. You'll have two minutes to speak. And then there will be a timer that notifies you when your time has ended. When you get down, you'll be sure to state your first and last name as well as your address. And please refrain from using any council member's name or staff member's name directly as you address the body. First up is Becky Gross and Jeremy Dyrton. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for having me. Ridge Road Community.
Would you start, state your first and last name as well as your address?
My name is Becky Gross. I live at fourteen sixty-three Ridge Road. Would the Ridge Road community please raise their hands? Most of us have lived on Ridge Road twenty-plus years. Some have been there since birth. We are all vested in our community. We are good law-abiding citizens who love our way of life. We are here today to request that you do not issue a, you do not issue a permit for the development plan for eleven thirteen Ridge Road Hopkins. Because of the negative impact to the watershed and especially the Congaree National Park, the only national park in South Carolina. Ridge Road's unique topography substantially affects the Congaree National Park. Do not issue a permit for the development plan for eleven thirteen Ridge Road. Please protect our only national park. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dr. Jeremy Dyrton. I live at three fifty-seven Cross Creek Road in central South Carolina, outside of Clemson. I'm a conservation biologist and postdoctoral fellow at Clemson. I actually did my dissertation at Clemson on the Congaree Biosphere Region, which is an international designation for the Congaree region. There's only twenty-eight of them in the United States. I'm here actually representing Congaree Biosphere Region itself. So my dissertation actually focused on modeling the biodiversity of the Congaree Biosphere Region and wildlife connectivity, and then ultimately how to best conserve this whole area. Part of this research was a systematic conservation plan using a large collaborative team of freshwater biologists, a natural resource economist, myself, and three professors, looking at all the ways of balancing conservation with development. When it came to things like ecosystem services, like carbon sequestration, water filtration, and and water capture. When we did the iterations of the conservation plan, over and over again, this property that's on eleven thirteen Ridge Road came up in every single plan as a very important place to be conserving. And that's primarily because of the ecosystem services it provides and carbon sequestration and water capture, water that's going from Fort Jackson into Congaree National Park. Also for things like freshwater habitat, for important fish species, and then also for wildlife connectivity, which is the movement of animals between two important parcels of land, this being Fort Jackson and Congaree National Park. There's lots of other areas within the Lower Richland area that didn't show up as important conservation areas, like monocultures, forest plantations that could be used as development. This area in particular is very important for the watershed corridor of the Cedar Creek. And so I was here just to speak on that nature and the importance of conserving this land. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, if you would, please say many applause so we can get through all of our names.
Ms. Mackey, Madam Vice Chair, before you call the next speaker, the county attorney wishes to be recognized.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just listening to the first two speakers. County Council doesn't have the authority to not allow a permit that's legal. The permitting department, if there's any biological or environmental issues, that information should be presented to them in the appropriate manner. But County Council makes the law, their legislative body. They do not determine who gets permits and who can't. So even if all eleven of you wanted to deny it, you couldn't. Just, I just thought that needed to be said.
Can he explain how we approach that?
I'm sorry, ma'am. We do not take comments from the audience like that. Thank you. Mr. Chair, am I allowed to proceed with the list? Thank you. Next is, and I apologize, I can't fully read the last name, John Logue and Majinkin. Thank you. Yes, sir, if you will state your first and last name and address.
My name's John Logue. I live at one oh eight San Carlos Court, which is off Ridge Road. I moved to this community in nineteen ninety-eight. I'm a botanist and a naturalist. I taught at the university for more than forty years in the biological field. And my research area is in plant systematics and ecology. The tract of land that's poised for development on Ridge Road is located in an ecotonal area that contains examples of the following biotic and community types. It has xeric hardpan forest, springhead seepage communities, streamhead picocins, including a mature stand of Atlantic white cedar, turkey oak, longleaf pine mixed with mesic hardwoods, and numerous vernal pools that are essential for amphibian reproduction. It also has intermittent flowing streams that are associated with artesian water sources. Plant-an animal diversity is maximized by the overlap of these communities. I have personally collected and observed two hundred species of insects, including many important pollinators of crops and native wildlife food, sixteen amphibians, species of amphibians, twenty-two species of reptiles. Too many birds to list, but it includes thirteen raptors, six species of woodpeckers, two large flocks of turkeys, and twenty species of mammals. This area not only drains into the Congaree Swamp in the state's only national park. It's a part of a wildlife corridor between the park and the protected areas of Fort Jackson. My great concern is that the promiscuous attitude of the state toward unsustainable and loosely regulated development has precipitated a virtual gold rush of plunderers who are willing to invade and destroy the natural systems that make our state attractive to outsiders. Their only concern is monetary gain.
Thank you. That is your time. Ma'am, you're up.
Hi. Thank you for hearing our concerns about eleven thirteen Ridge Road. My name is Mike in Blackwell. I live at forty-six hundred Old Leesburg Road in Hopkins.
A little closer to your mic.
My name is Mike in Blackwell. I live at forty-six hundred Old Leesburg Road in Hopkins, South Carolina, two nine zero six one. I have lived in Lower Richland the majority of my life. I have lived in my current home forty-plus years. I happily pay my taxes. I want my government to be there, or I pay my taxes because I want my government to be there for me and my community when we need them. We urgently need you now. We have learned that in addition to five affordable housing developments already in our area, there is now yet another one being proposed for eleven thirteen Ridge Road. District eleven now has more than our fair share of affordable housing. When is it gonna stop? This is urgent. Out of the blue, we learn they may start construction on the proposed Ridge Road subdivision in about three to four months. This is unacceptable. As you have heard, the parcel at eleven thirteen Ridge Road is crucial to the Congaree biome. We also need you to protect us from developers who have no concern for our environment, quality of life, or safety. They do not live in the communities they target for affordable housing. The community's concerns are not their bottom line. As I stated in my email to you on December second, we urgently need you to halt Ridge Road development for many reasons, but three stand out and need your immediate attention before eleven thirteen Ridge Road can be considered for development. Number one, environment, which you've just heard. Number two, traffic. We need a traffic study. We need an independent assessment of the aging, already failing sewer system supporting the Green Lake subdivision and is now slated to support the proposed development.
Thank you.
Check my email from December second.
Next is Norman Gross and Cynthia Harrelson.
My name's Norman Gross. I live at fourteen sixty-three Ridge Road. This is a community that's got a small road, probably seventy-five percent of its double solid line. Our traffic closed rough in the mornings and in the evenings because people are using it for a crosscut from Leesburg Road. Now, once they finish four lane in Leesburg Road, there's gonna be more people getting off on Leesburg, cutting our Ridge Road to get to Sumter Highway. This is gonna be a real problem because with three hundred homes, that kind of figures out to twenty-seven hundred trips a day. Well, this same developer has another track land behind. It's already got a permit for up to almost four hundred homes. So now you're talking about maybe eight hundred homes. And I'm sure that he's not gonna build that down on Old Leesburg Road, which is dirt. He's gonna want to turn around, drive a road through from Ridge Road down to that other parcel. I had some other things written down here, but I guess from what your attorney says, that the county council can't do anything. I don't quite understand that because why do we have you guys if you can't make some decisions? You know, that's unfair to the rest of the county and the people in the county. So something needs to be done about it one way or the other. And we were told that county council does not have to approve this permit. So, you know, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Cindy Harrelson. My husband and I live at thirteen seventeen Lower Richland Boulevard. We have a forty-acre parcel that meets up with the back of eleven thirteen Ridge Road, where a three-hundred-house development is in the works. While we're equally concerned about the environmental issues that you've been hearing about tonight, my husband and I have a valid fear of what will happen to our well water source when construction begins on this new development. We have three wells and two ponds that are fed by a natural underground spring. This same underground spring feeds the majority, if not all, of the wells and ponds in our area. When they begin construction on this new development, this spring will likely be disturbed when they start digging and altering the natural topography, thus impacting our drinking water source. Last week, I contacted the National Water Systems Council in D.C. The Well Care Program Supervisor advised me that these are valid concerns and that if eighty percent of our community relies on water wells, the local government should step in and do something for our community's protection. The National Council also advised that at a minimum, we need to have our current water levels measured and make sure that all of our well structures are intact prior to construction taking place on this development. With the amount of wells in the vicinity of eleven thirteen Ridge Road, having all of the wells tested and inspected will take time and be very expensive. Our community should not be put in a position of laying out our money to test our wells because of what's taking place by an outside developer. We need you to step in. I ask you to please intervene and have the county to stop any approval of permits associated with eleven thirteen Ridge Road to allow time for our wells to properly be tested and inspected. I also ask that you provide a funding source for our community to pay for the expenses associated with these tests. Thank you for your time. We look forward to hearing from you and how you plan to address all of our concerns.
Thank you. Next is Eddie Allison and Jennifer Manick. Thank you. Eddie Allison? Sorry, Billy Sanders?
No, Mr. Allison has allocated his time to me.
Got it. All right. Go ready.
Good evening. For about seven years, I've been coming before you.
You start with your name, first, last name, address.
I should know by now. Jennifer Manke, three twenty Clearview Drive, Hopkins. For about seven years, I've been coming before you, all of this leading up to this point of the developing or overdevelopment of our area. But it all began back in nineteen seventy-five when I was in high school at Sumter High. And my friends and I got together to write letters to send to the State House to try to save a tract of land that was about to be logged. We called it the Key Campaign because we went through the drawers in our kitchens and pulled out all the unknown keys and mailed them to all our representatives down at the State House and said, you are the key to saving this swamp. And that swamp has now become the only national park in South Carolina. There are only fifty-two in the United States. We are the stewards of that land, and you are too, as much as the Rangers are who work there. We are very responsible for our national park. And Richland County is the steward of that park. And if we don't take care of it, it might be a little bit like Blue Skies Fire hydrant that we don't take care of and other places want it because they will appreciate it. We can't give anybody else our national park. But this development has everything to do with the fact that we own basically the only national park in South Carolina. And it will be, this property issue will be up before you. It's been also up to the Planning Commission, which we also go to. But my heart has been in Congaree Swamp for a long time. Another thing I did a while back was I went on a beautiful spring day this past spring, and I counted, checked out all the license plates in the parking lot, and I came and reported there were thirty-nine states represented in the parking lot. So today I went on a dreary day, and there were eleven states there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Reese. My address is two zero four Sonoma Drive. That's in Hopkins, South Carolina. So I'm not a resident of Ridge Road, but I am a resident of the Lower Richland community. And the development at this area directly impacts my side of Lower Richland as well. This is an environmental injustice issue. Lower Richland is a bowl. And what happens at the ridge of the bowl, which is Ridge Road, negatively drains down to our district. A low-income, a rural, a mostly minority community. And what's happening here is that the development that's happening on the ridge is having negative impact in the center of the bowl. That's why they're talking about Congaree. Because the water is running down to our area. It's more than Congaree. It's a community. One of the largest black land ownership communities in the country. And this is an environmental injustice issue. The more you allow for that kind of construction to happen on the ridge, the more you damage the community that my family has been in for a hundred and fifty years. No, we're not asking for you to make a decision about a permit. But we are asking for you to acknowledge that the issues that are happening on the ridge of Lower Richland is affecting the lower part of Richland County. That water drains down. We are not a homogeneous county. The topography in Lower Richland is different, which is why we are Lower Richland. And for you to use the same kind of codes for our area is problematic.
Thank you. Billy Sanders and Linda Johnson?
Good evening. My name's Linda Johnson. I live on six fifty-four Harmon Road in Hopkins, South Carolina. Thank you very much for hearing my brief comments. I may not have lived in this area for as long as some of the other residents. It's been about eighteen years, and I've really enjoyed it. One of the reasons that I chose to live there after retiring from the Air Force was because of its rural nature and the ability to have a plot of land. And I'm very concerned about this development on Ridge Road where they're proposing almost three hundred. It's a high-density development, bringing it in and how it's going to affect that rural character and nature of our community, not to mention the increased traffic, the probable the increased burden on our school system, the the emergency services out there. But now, as we have heard from some of the other speakers, the ecological, the environmental impact. I recreate in the Congaree National Park. I kayak. I hike down there. I bring my friends. I bring my relatives and everyone down there to enjoy that area. And I would really hope that you would consider all these comments and concerns that we've brought to you tonight. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thanks for allowing me this time to speak. My name is Billy Sanders, and I live at eleven thirty-three Ridge Road with my wife, Jennifer Sanders. Just eleven thirteen Ridge Road backs up to my property. Actually, it's almost in my front yard. That hundred and ninety-two acres that next to my house, what they are talking about doing is developing sixty-four acres of that. They're talking about putting three hundred home on sixty-four acres. We don't even have three hundred home on Ridge Road. I'm asking y'all that one day when you don't have anything going on, one Sunday afternoon, just take your time and ride out on Ridge Road and see how beautiful it is. Have y'all ever seen a real live eagle? Well, that's what we have over on Ridge Road. And I can tell you, in the morning, I get up at five o'clock, I go outside, and that's the highlight of my day, walking outside, just kind of looking around and enjoying it what me and my wife have worked for. We put a lot of labor into cutting down trees and building our house, and we love the community. I used to be stationed at Fort Jackson. Did twenty-two years in the military and going back and forth, traveling up and down the Ridge Road. I've always said that one day I'm gonna build a house over here, save my money, bought the lane, built the house. When I built the house, I went around to the community, made sure everybody knew who I were, and I got a chance to meet them. So we're asking y'all to save our community. Also, I want to mention to us, McIntyre wrote a letter asking the county council, planning commission, not to develop that hundred and ninety-two acres, but a simple fact that a lot of aircraft flies over that property. And if they ever have some type of mechanical problem, that way they would be able to land their helicopter. So just ask y'all to take consideration, all of that, and just help us keep our area roof. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Cynthia Spencer and Pam Ross.
Hello, my name is Cynthia Spencer. I'm asking you guys, please work me. I'm a lot nervous. I'm retired Army. I live at eighteen thirteen Penfield. I'm retired Army. I live at eighteen thirteen Penfield Drive, uh, Columbia, South Carolina. And um, I'm appearing for you today because I need help. Without being specific, I filed a complaint and since I filed a complaint, I'm being harassed. My email has been stopped. Um, so I started going over here to the Richland County Library. And I noticed that my email um, wouldn't send, so I tried to address it. I couldn't get any headway there. I filed a complaint. I went to the police department to um, address the issue that I should have freedom of speech, you know, um. And um, I couldn't get any headway there. I went to the state OIG and he says that um, he couldn't do anything for me. You know, he would forward it off to someone else to help me. And um, I need help because there are things going on and I feel as though I should be able to speak to an attorney. I'm being followed. My mail that I put in the box is being taken out. My mail that is um, coming to my house is being opened and read. Um, my bank accounts are being accessed, Navy Federal, USAA, and I can't um, and my thrift savings account is being robbed. And um, I can't. My phone, like when I call somebody, it's the same people answering over and over and over. And I've taken up, I don't know what that thing is called. You know, they help you with fraud and identity theft and it's the same people over and over. There is no place around that I can go to a phone now because everybody has their own phone. And um, I'm requesting some help from the council to address these issues.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Pam Rose. I live at thirteen twenty-eight Ridge Road um, in Hopkins. Um, and thank you for the opportunity uh, for us to speak tonight. Um, for thirty years, I have um, had the opportunity to live in the log cabin uh, that was built during the Great Depression by my late um, husband's father. Every time people come to visit, they comment um, about the quality and the character and the uniqueness of our area in the Ridge Road community. Um, it is something special. And because of that, um, we, I go back to this fact that safety and quality of life are two primary responsibilities of elected officials. Um, and there's a delicate balance of individual rights um, that is involved. Um, to the, to some people, uh, the term property rights or property owner kind of rings generic. Um, but to those of us who are gathered here this evening from the Ridge Road community and those who were not able to join us tonight, um, we're not talking about property. We're talking about our home. We're talking about our dreams. This is where we choose to live. We want to share it with other people. And fifteen years ago, when we started this long battle about the development of eleven thirteen Ridge Road, this is not new. We have carried this burden for fifteen years. And continuing to address. And we are still here tonight. Because this is our community. Dreams for life's milestones, everyday peace of mind. People who want their children to be able to grow up in an area like this. I remember fifteen years ago, I don't remember if we were in this particular area or if it was a zoning commission. But Richland County had a uniquely rural, uniquely urban slogan. And I hope, I would ask you to reflect on that, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next is Clay Chappell.
My name is Clay Chapel. I live at fourteen sixteen Ridge Road. Uh, work and was raised on Bluff Road. Um, I'm very concerned about the development plan for eleven thirteen Ridge Road. I think it is out of character for the entire community. And it will be a detriment to the entire community, including the people who end up living there. Um, I'm all for everyone having a nice home. But three hundred homes on sixty-four acres sounds like a nightmare to me, especially for the people who live in the community. And especially for those who will live in those homes. Um, the people who own the property have shown us what their intent is and what they're committed to doing. They have raped the land of any stick of merchantable timber on the place. And have done nothing to reforest it or replant it or manage it in any manner. And I think that's what they're trying to do to the rest of the community there, all of us. All of us on Ridge Road, Leesburg Road, Old Leesburg Road, Bluff Road, Lower Richardson Boulevard. And you folks on the council are elected to help protect the whole community from this type of abuse. If you can, I'd like to see you help the young lady there. She's got a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that concludes all individuals that have signed up to speak this evening.
Adam Vice Chair.
May I be recognized?
You're recognized, Ms. Newton.
Thank you. Just want to say thank you to everyone who has come out um, for the Ridge Road community I work with. Obviously, a lot of constituents, we all do. And I don't know that I know any people who love their community more um, than you do. I have met with you. I've, I've been to some of your homes and, and walked along the paths and trails with you and you absolutely live in a beautiful place. And I know, I just want to recognize that it has been a long journey with this process. Wasn't here fifteen years ago, but back in twenty twenty when they came and asked to rezone to medium density and you, you asked me not to, to protect the character of the community. And that's what I did. I said no. And I made a promise to you that I would never increase the density of zoning on that property. And I've kept that promise. When they came back over the summer and wanted to upzone again, I said no. And my promise to you is that within the bounds of the law and what we're allowed to do, I will continue to work with you to make sure that anything that is developed there is respectful and taking care of our community. Again, there are things that we can do um, in some areas where our hands are tied, but we absolutely will work with you. Um, there was a person who asked a question about how to submit those environmental concerns and I just want you to know that I'll follow up with you later. I've shared that information with several people in the community, but um, we're all working together on this and I am working for you and will continue to work for you. And I just wanted to acknowledge that. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Newton. Item on the agenda is item nine, which is, yes, you recognize uh, Mr. Malinowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to uh, ask the attorney if he could possibly provide these individuals that spoke tonight and those that didn't speak from the community where they can take their concerns in an effort to achieve some success in stopping what appears to be a negative mark on the environment and the infrastructure. And I'd also like to know, and you can tell us this later, uh, for benefit of council members, if we have the authority to approve or disprove, disapprove rezoning matters, county codes and ordinances, other environmental matters. Why wouldn't something like this be in the purview of council also? And you can provide us that later, but for now, I just think I'd like to have the people be told where they can take their concerns and who is, which is the group or entity in the county that can help them out possibly.
Right?
Yes, uh, the county council is a, like as I stated, a legislative or lawmaking body. That means you make zoning laws, but you don't determine who gets to abide by the laws. You make the laws. Uh, so in that sense, if someone can come to you, if for example, if something is zoned a certain way and you have the authority to, they have the authority to appeal. And you can change the zoning, but if they're within the law, which is already there, you, there's nothing you can do about that. And permitting is something completely different. So you really have nothing to do with permitting. Uh,
Alright, well.
Is there any place they can go and present their comments?
So Mr. Wright, I, I believe what Mr. Malinowski was asking earlier, I think it was, he just wanted to know uh, if there's a way you can get, I guess, this information to some of the folks who spoke tonight or?
So, someone may be able to. I'm not, I don't think the appropriate person would be me. Or uh, I don't do permitting. I don't have anything to do with permitting. I just know the county council doesn't do permitting either and has nothing to do with it.
Recognize, Ms. Newton.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I don't want to call anybody by name, but I'm making eye contact with somebody. I, I think you see me, right? It's you. Okay, well, it's okay. I'll text you later. So I do have that information. I have had conversations with Mr. Wright and planning in terms of how information can be submitted to our planning department. So I'll, I, anyone who wants that information can follow up with me, but I will follow up with um, the folks in the community. And I have been speaking to several of you directly about how to submit these very environmental concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Newton. Next item on the agenda is item nine, which is a report of the county administrator. Mr. Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of council, in your packet, uh, there are two particular updates that I've provided for you. One is specific to Avalon Glen Detention Center, uh, and one is uh, specific to a request that was received. Um, I'm not going to go through every slide in the detention center uh, pack. Uh, but I, for those of you who are unable to attend the Detention Center ad hoc committee meeting, I wanted you to have access to this information to know what was covered uh, and the steps that we're taking or, or currently taking to have been uh, already uh, in, in motion to address the concerns at the detention center. As you may recall, one of the uh, key concerns was about hiring. Uh, and I just want to let you know, since March first of twenty twenty-two, um, the detention center has actually hired over fifty detention officers. Uh, and, and that does not include some of the upper level individuals. So the point of me bringing that up is that uh, a question was asked early on, you know, what were these things that we put in place? What type of result or effect were they having? That included everything from initiatives resulting in uh, pay raises, a pay plan. Uh, also some continuing initiatives related to uh, personnel in terms of individuals having the ability to uh, better themselves through educational certification efforts. All, all of these things have.
Brown, if you don't mind, I'm just going to stop you. I'm going to allow some of the uh, uh, some of our citizens to uh, clear the, the chamber. I know I'm a little distracted, so. Can't speak for anyone else. On, Mr. Brown. Sorry about that.
No problem, Mr. Chair. Again, the, the idea was just really to allow the full council to have the opportunity to see this information that was shared through the Detention Center ad hoc committee. There is no specific request or action taken that needs to be taken by county council. Just wanted to have uh, you be aware of this information. Uh, and again, the, some of the key initiatives that are underway. So again, we've had uh, a relative amount of success with bringing on personnel to the detention center. Uh, as you kind of go throughout the process of the packet, you will also see there's some other identified areas that we've addressed. Uh, one of those areas I would be remiss in not uh, just acknowledging our interim director of the facility. Uh, I'm going to ask him just to come to the podium so you could see him. For those of you who hadn't had a chance to see him, uh, maybe you've seen him on uh, one of the interviews that, that we had that um, introduced him and, and some of the initiatives, but his name is Mr. Kramer Harvey. Uh, he has a, a background uh, in dealing with corrections. Uh, and Mr. Harvey's been doing a good job of leading the facility uh, and specifically addressing some of the mentality changes that we're talking about that we've listed in the packet. Uh, and what I'll do is just briefly, Mr. Chair, just uh, Mr. Harvey, if you could, talk about um, our efforts as it relates to addressing um, some of the improvements from uh, a medical and mental health perspective and just the mindset that we're trying to uh, imprint upon the men and women who are working there to secure the detainees in that environment.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Brown, and thank you, council, for once again, allowing me the um, opportunity to come and speak in front of this great body. Um, like Mr. Brown said, we're changing the culture. Um, one of the things that we're changing is we're going, we're changing the philosophy of what correction looks like. Um, and that's dealing with our mentally ill. We all know statistically mentally ill in, in jails are just overpopulated right now with those that are, that suffer from mental illness. And so we have really been aggressively trying to figure out how do we keep the mentally ill safe as well as provide them services while they're in our custody? And one of the things that we're, we're doing, and uh, Mr. Brown, if he gets to the slide, I'm going to talk to you about it, is that we open up a mental health unit or mentally ill unit. Um, we separated those mentally ill that was um, previously, they was um, classified and they was put in what they called the SHU. Um, the SHU was a specialized housing unit that, the infamous lockdown unit. We have literally demolished that unit and took that unit out of offline to where the mentally ill are not housing those units. Um, it's to the point now where there's no detainees are in those units right now. Um, that whole unit needs to be, ha- have a true overhaul. Um, that's one of the things we're doing. We're just changing the philosophy. We're changing the philosophy even about isolation. You know, keeping people behind in a, in a room more than twenty-three hours is that should break all types of mental health illnesses. And, and, and we're focusing on that as well. Um, and, and truth be told, y'all, we're just getting back to the basics. We're caring for people. That's where we're at. We're, we're just going back to the basis of caring for people, no matter if they're criminal or if they're staff. We're caring for people. And so everything that you're seeing in your packet that's in front of you is basically around centering around people. Caring for people, taking care of those that's in our custody as well as our staff.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. And so again, not to uh, belabor, uh, we, we definitely have this information, uh, a lot more detail during the committee process, so please feel free to look at that. For those who are participating uh, in the audience or online right now, you can actually go on the website, take a look at the Detention Center ad hoc committee uh, that was held and look at all the details that we outlaid uh, that are uh, in the packet, but are in words and more specific detail. I just wanted to get in the full body to have access to this information, to know the efforts that we're undertaking at the detention center. Uh, and so that you will have the breadth of some of that information. So uh, as well as introduce Mr. Harvey. So, Mr. Chair, take any questions about that particular update? Before I move on, are there any questions, Mr. Chair, that you would like for me to address on, related to that update, sir?
Um, questions from the body or comments from the body for Mr. Brown? You recognize Ms. English?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, no questions, but just a thank you to the staff and Mr. Harvey for your hard work and it's truly appreciated and just wanted to go on record as saying so much for all of your efforts that have gone into that.
Thank you. Do you know comments or questions? Ms. Newton, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I echo uh, Ms. English's comments. Mr. Brown, we, we talked about this a little, but I think it would be beneficial that there are a lot of changes, positive changes that you're making at the detention center. If you could just address what the county is going to be doing from a process perspective to make sure that there's continuous improvement, that we're not going to stop here, but are but in terms of continuing to review both facilities and procedures.
Uh, thank you, Mrs. Very good question. So uh, specifically, a couple of things are happening right now as you and I speak on, on this evening. Uh, one, we have actually have one of our assistant county administrators have been working hand in hand uh, with the facility. Uh, trying to show uh, administration's commitment uh, to the improvement that needs to happen at the facility. But from an ongoing standpoint, eventually I'm, I'm going to bring Dr. Thompson out of that environment. Uh, and he can visit periodically on the visitation side, not the detention side. Uh, however, one of the things that I've given much thought to uh, is uh, filling a position that I would almost call a compliance officer or quality control. Uh, this person would actually have the ability to work um, as, almost as an assistant director or potentially a director. They have the same qualifications. Uh, but they will report directly to me. And the idea behind that is that the facility has a level of responsibility um, that I want to make sure that no one feels as though their supervisor can withhold them from taking the right actions. So this would give me the ability to have somebody on the ground who can work with the facility, but who has the ability to independently advise me of issues or, or to make things that are, are compliance related things, to make sure those things are compliant. So uh, that's somebody I'll be looking to bring on board. Uh, Ms. Newton, also, I've uh, been in contact with um, DHEC, for example, they're one of the agencies who deal with compliance in the facility. I've had conversations as well with the Department of Corrections, myself as the county administrator. Uh, these are other ways that I plan to involve myself directly to make sure that the Alphons Glen Detention Center continues to move forward. Then once we maintain, get a Then, once we maintain, get a level of expectation that I would like to have that it's maintained. So those are some of the initial steps that are already on the way and things that are to come for Ms. Newton.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
You recognize, Mr. Wright?
I, I just wanted to state that, you know, as you know, there have been a couple of times where I've did reports and presentations to the Chief Justice toll. And the last couple of presentations I've done, she has been spoken highly of this council and this administrator and the things and the facility and the things that has, has been done and with this, this year even from March to now. And the vast changes that have gone on. And she on the record lauded this council and the administrator and staff for the dedication, not just in, in words, but in action and money to change the facility and to make it better.
additional amends or questions? Brown?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. So in response to a request that came to the county, thank you, Mr. Harvey. Will you have in your packet, I believe, it's shown beginning on page fifty-one, there was a review of salaries that are associated with our public safety sectors. And in response to some of the questions that I received and in reviewing this information, I provided to you in your packet, what you have is a view of those departments that have been included in that consideration. So on page fifty-two, I believe you have there listed the sheriff's office, the solicitor's office, the public defender's office, the quarter appointed special advocates and emergency management services. And as I share this information with you that's currently here in the packet, I want you to know that as a part of this process, I spoke to all these department heads or elected officials. So the conversation that took place related to the information within the packet that we're going to generally discuss, we wanted to make sure that, that those men and women who leave those departments, whether they were elected officials or appointed officials or department heads, that they were aware and had an opportunity to share with us information concerning this review. So as a part of that, what you will see is that there are certainly some noticed vacancies. But what we have determined is, and in addressing, in addressing their original request that came to us, both in writing, which is from the sheriff, and then some additional questions than our previous conversations we had with those other offices, we can actually address some of the salary concerns within the budgets that these offices have based on their vacancy rates and based on some COLA funds that the county approved. As you looked through the packet, you will notice that in order to do that, what we tell you is that part of that addressing will be for this fiscal year, fiscal year twenty twenty-three. But as you begin to address it, kind of going out into the future, that's when other considerations need to take place. But before we specifically get to that, if you were to go down and look in your packet, you will see we put the departments down that we were looking at, and we looked at other counties that are similar or same size in our locales. And we looked at what their annual budgets were, kind of broke that down by cost per constituent. We looked at whether or not, I'm right now looking at the sheriff's department, for example, we looked at whether or not those offices had controlled over the detention center. We looked at their, their base salary pay. So if you look here on this particular slide related to the sheriff's department, you will see Richland at the top. If you can go back to, will you see with Richland County at the top, what our base salary for a deputy are listed there? And then at the very bottom of that slide, you will see what the average is, and that average does not include Richland County. So we did not include those numbers when we took the, the averages of these counties. You can see the number of full-time positions they all have. And again, broken down positions per one thousand population. So you have a general overview of what it looks like across the counties that are again similar sizes and similar or close to our locale. We did point out a couple of things there. Ori County, for example, they actually have a mix of personnel. So that's why you see the double stars there. So they're a little bit different than some of the other counties. As you move on to the next slide, and I'll try to be concise, Mr. Chair, but if you all have any questions, please, you know, let me know. Now I'll come back around. So from the solicitor's standpoint, here's information that we gathered from the Association of Counties. And again, it shows you Richland County. And it shows you the, the staffing totals that are there. Kind of look around the other counties again that are have these positions. You kind of see what their salaries look like. And you look at, again, you look at the average and see where that compares to where Richland County is. So moving on to the public defender, again, you have the same type of setup where we're just looking at our county, other similar counties that have these agencies. And then what their salaries are as compared to what Richland Counties are. We'll go ahead to the next slide. And what you have here is specific to the request of, look at the information that you received via the request. And how can we support these if that's a possibility? So my team went, looked at that and the breakdown is kind of as you see here. So if you were to address these recommendations as you see here listed, you would basically be looking at the recommendations that we had later on in the packet. So here, what we're asking for, and I do this for the purpose of the meeting, what you would take is right now, you saw that the deputy's starting pay, I believe, was thirty-five, four, three, one. So that starting pay would go to thirty-six, five, oh, eight. And there's a difference between a deputy three and a deputy one. But you can see there, those deputy threes, that that's what you were looking at before. We'll go to thirty-six, five, oh, eight. Deputy one, starting salaries is certified. Those are your law enforcement officers who have the ability to carry out the law at its, to its fullest extent in terms of enforcement. That would increase to forty-five thousand. You see the number of positions there and what the range would be for those increases. And so there are some people who might be close, who might receive a small increase, and there are some who are very far away. From the, from the attorney's standpoint, you can see our recommendation is that we treat attorneys from the starting salary perspective across the board the same. That all starting, all county attorneys, excuse me, I'm not referring to the county attorney's office, all attorneys that perform services within the sphere of Richland County would have a, that are for, work for Richland County government or have to be funded by Richland County government would have a starting salary of sixty-two thousand dollars. So again, the idea as we go forward, and you will see this with our wraparound study, is we're trying to create a scale and a plan that's consistent. And then to address the concerns and needs of the paramedics, we've been talking about this for a while. EMS has a paramedic shortage. And we would like to address that. And so the recommendation there would be increasing those salaries for those paramedics. If you can go to the next slide for me, please. So this is what I mentioned earlier, Mr. Chair, members of council. We believe that currently within the vacancies of these departments and the related COLAs that you could fund these beginning in January, utilizing current vacancies within the budget. Now, in fiscal year twenty twenty-four is where you would first have to pick up the full year. And you see what the totals look like for that. That's what brings us to our next slide, where we broke down ways that we believe you could address this. One way going forward into fiscal year twenty twenty-four and you could say we need to reduce our operating expenditures across the county. So that is certainly an option for you to consider. Another option is you could allocate two point four million dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act funds that we had allocated in, during the, the process of allocating those funds that would give you fiscal year twenty-two, twenty twenty-four covered. And then again, going forward, you could also increase the milage that it takes to fund those decisions. And that's roughly, we put down here, believe about one point five mils. So these are options that we put to address what it would take to move forward with affecting those departments who requested a need, Mr. Chair, as you asked it to look at after you received requests from the sheriff's department. And we notified you that we had other requests from other public safety sections. So we went and looked at all of those things. And this is the recommendation that we were brought before you to say if you wanted to address those, here is how you could do it. And, and it would be some options for you to consider if you wanted to do it and what method you would want to do or to use to address it. So certainly we'll take any questions from the body at this point that you have, Mr. Chair.
Well, let me just say thank you to not only you, but your team as well for putting, you know, the time into this. I know it was a painstaking effort. But you know, just the comparisons, the numbers and to do it in, you know, such a short period of time. Just want to let you know how, you know, grateful and thankful that I am, you know, for you and your team putting this together for the body. So. Any questions, any comments from the body? Let me begin with Mr. Livingston. Well, tell you what, Ms. Tracy, you had your hand up as well? Well, there's several hands up. So I'm, I'm thinking about just going, starting from my left flank and going all the way down. So Ms. Tracyo, Ms. English, you had your hand up. So Ms. English, then Ms. Mr. Livingston, Ms. Mackey, and then Ms. Barrett.
Mr. Chair, and then can you whip back to your left again?
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, let's start with you.
No, I don't know. I'll give other people the chance.
Mr. Rayce, you have the floor.
Thank you. So I'm looking at the number of vacancies and thinking about how we are using some funding based on empty seats essentially to offer some increases to those people who are serving. Presumably, we would like to fill those seats as well in the future. And so when we're looking at the impact for the future, does that include filling seats or does that maintain the same number?
So the immediate future would be you would have a hold. But yes, the ultimate goal is to be able to, to fill those seats as they become, as you have people who are, are able and are willing to fill those seats, which is currently not the, the situation that we're experiencing.
Right. So the numbers that are before us for the two point four something million is with maintaining the same number of people on, on our roles that we have right now.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think my question is, is in line with that because I was looking at those seventy-four positions that are there and just doing just a rough number of thirty-five thousand times seventy-four. I'm coming up with two point five mill or so. With those seventy-four positions, regardless of whether they are filled or not, do we have to have those funds available? Or do we have some type of ability to fluctuate those funds?
One more time, Ms. English.
We have seventy-four positions.
Yes, ma'am.
We have to have funds available for all positions? Or is there a way that we can fluctuate those funds?
So the positions have to be funded so that those dollars can be counted.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Brown, the vacancies we are referring to are just simply the vacancies in the public safety area, right?
Correct. We're only looking at the, those agencies that we're talking about here right now, the public safety.
Vacancy outside of the public safety area.
No, sir.
Okay, great. If, if we supported option B, does that mean that we'll be okay in terms of funding for this year and the remainder of next year?
That would mean that we would be okay for the remainder of this year and then beginning for your, that'd be for your fiscal year twenty twenty-four as well.
That's what I mean. Okay. We'll be okay for the remainder of this year and next year.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I clarify Mr. Livingston's question? Is that okay? Thank you. And I know you just said this, but I just want to be straight because we do fiscal years and I usually live in a calendar year. So you were saying through the end of this fiscal year, which ends June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three?
Correct.
And then the entirety of the fiscal year that then runs July one twenty-three to June thirtieth, sorry, yeah, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four?
That's correct. That's why we're saying if in fact the council decided to go with this option or the option B that, that would not be started till the January timeframe, that gives you half of fiscal year twenty twenty-three that you're dealing with, that you can use the current budget and the current vacancies. And then the new year, twenty twenty-four, is where you would apply the American Rescue Plan Act funds to take care of fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston. Got it when you said it the first time. I just needed one more.
Smacky.
Thank you. I guess going back to something that Ms. Rayce you hit on, so I can understand. So if we use the money now from the current vacancies, is that enough to fulfill the full request?
We believe that it will be if you decide that you wanted to address what, in this specific instance, the larger, the larger portion, which is what the sheriff was requesting. It would be my recommendation as the administrator that you authorize the utilization of the American Rescue Plan Act funds to ensure that we don't have a misstep there because there were a number of deputies or we just got our numbers off slightly. But we do believe that you would be able to, to take care of the current fiscal year using the current budget that was already approved by county council.
And then with the option of using the American Rescue Plan specifically to the sheriff's office, because it's my understanding that once we allocate funding to his office, that we can reduce their budget unlike other county departments. So when, if we allocate the ARPA dollars to the sheriff's department, when the ARPA dollars run out and, I don't know, maybe twenty twenty-six, then at that point, we automatically then have to make sure that we have in our budget a way to fund at that amount.
That is correct. And, and I, I don't want to get off track in this conversation. I believe we can't reduce positions. I don't necessarily know if funding also is equated to that. So, but I understand what your question is, but, Mr. Turner, I mean, I'm sorry.
I should. Recognize, Mr. Wright.
Right. We can't reduce the positions. You have to fund it at least to be able to keep the positions open, basically. You don't have to necessarily have it to that same level, but you do have to fund them to a level to be able to hire people, basically.
So I think it's going to wind up being the same thing. I think, I think, I think I understand what he was, I just wanted to make sure I didn't misspeak on the county not having the ability to address budget dollars differently. But if we, bad example, but if I hire someone at thirty-five thousand and I say that that's what's needed to employ them and you, and you give me the funding, then ideally, you're going to be expecting at a minimum thirty-five thousand until that person no longer serves in that position or the sheriff decides, you know, that a different salary is warranted.
And then I guess the other question is, as it relates to, I believe it was option A that said a five percent reduction of county operations. Do be clear as to what departments that would apply to?
Yeah, so ideally, that would be, we would have to ask everybody across the county to reduce their expenditures by five percent. That, that's what we would be asking to address these, these options. Yes, ma'am.
And so when you say expenditures, that is not line item that is tied to personnel, that is operating? Or where are you saying expenditure? Or that's just their entire?
We will be, right. I mean, wherever we could get the five percent from. So that's what we, we would be asking, or we would be recommending that the council would, would allow us to, to make that, that change.
Okay. And then one more question. I'll, I'll let my other council members go. And so the third option you had was an option that proposed a tax increase to fund the request. And so that option would be only if we didn't go with the other ones. Is that correct? So if you didn't use ARPA, then you're saying increasing taxes to fund these positions would be an option?
Right. So think about the, the option B amount and think about needing that amount in milage to account for the request. So. Um, if I may elaborate just briefly, generally speaking, when you're trying for a taxing entity like Richland County. Um, we don't have really other ways to generate revenue other than fines and fees and taxes. So the way you address increased needs are generally reducing costs somewhere or expenditures. Or increasing your revenue. So that's why you have one of the options is. Reduce our costs or expenditures across the board somewhere. Or increase the amount of revenue we collect. And the only way we can do that is through fines, fees and taxes. And so thus those two options are up before you because that's that's what our limitations are as a governmental uh entity.
I'll I'll save my other questions. Let someone else go. Thank you.
Darren, you recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, um, Mr. Administrator, you and your team. Um, for really taking a deep dive and looking how, looking at how we can support. Um, our public safety employees across the board in the county is greatly appreciated. Um, so my do, my concern is with um given this increase. Or allowing for these increases, we are not taking into account the vacancies. That are really needed in order for these departments to continue. At the level of excellence that we would like to see. So I understand whereas we are um somewhat in my mind and and you didn't say this and I'm not putting words in your mouth. But in my mind, I it it's almost like a hiring freeze for for some of these departments. Because we're going to take the money that we would normally spend on it, on a position that is now vacant. To meet our our current need. And so with that, if we, if we look at the, you know, the. The sheriff's department or the solicitor's office who have vacancies. And they already operating at a deficit, whereas we are doing them at at an advan- putting them at advantage and. And providing them extra with these uh with these raises or increases. I'm concerned by not being able to, as you said, fill the seats. Someone said, fill the seats. Not be able to fill the seats that we may be putting ourselves at a at a further disadvantage. Is there a way that perhaps? Or have you ta- had an opportunity to crunch some numbers to say, okay, there is X amount of vacancies to date. At the sheriff's department. And we know that we, when we give these increases, we are going to look at making sure that those positions. Are included in that because I I mean, I had a personal experience where. Law enforcement didn't come because my call wasn't a priority. I can't imagine that to continue to happen. Um, so in my mind, I'm just thinking. How can we, or do you have a a plan to address that across right now? Or do we have, that's something that we have to wait because I don't know if we're going to. Be really putting ourselves in an advantage just by giving increases of salaries and still have hundreds of employees that need to be hired.
Yeah, so I think it's a two-pronged approach. Uh, so one, I want to go back to something I said earlier. And is that in looking at this uh as an option to move forward, um, the sheriff's department. Um, you know, is aware and and there's so many words signed off on it. So I believe they feel as though the need um will be met to a certain degree. Um, and I want to keep the focus on what you asked me about, but I want to turn back the page a little bit before we got to this particular. Update. We just got off to the detention center. If you recall, the steps that we took with the detention center related to personnel was the same thing that we're kind of talking about here. Uh, we took those vacancies, which, you know, we wish they weren't as many as they were, uh, and we utilized that. Um, and as a result, you know, we are seeing some, you know, increased personnel. So eventually, we're hoping that we'll get to a point to where um more salary dollars is the issue. Um, but we didn't want to wait on the hopeful personnel issue to materialize and not do enough. And then kind of be in the same position we're in. So um, again, back to the earlier point. The sheriff's department, uh, I believe um signed off on this approach. And I believe it will give them the ability to move forward and what they need to do in the in the in the near future. Uh, and of course, um, I should say, of course, it's not a good word, but as you look at the county's. Desire to invest um in various segments of its uh core functions. We're going to have to look at the way we prioritize expenditures and the way we prioritize the milage that we receive. Again, those are the really only two things that you have besides your fines and fees. Um, that you have to manipulate in terms of how can we, how can we make this match? Uh, and increase cost that we weren't expecting um or a new comply, a new mandate that we have to fund. Uh, so I I understand your point, uh, but I believe that the, in this case, the entity in question believe that this is a path forward.
Mr. Chair, one.
But Miss Mayor, please.
And that is the two point four million that we're talking about from ARP funds. Those are those funds that have not been allotted for um across the board, whether it was through our grants. Or any of our other projects. Is that correct?
Correct. There was a pot of funds during the budget process where we were having this discussion where I asked that you leave that pot of funds. Um, set aside to potentially address public safety. Related concerns. Uh, and I'm I am speaking specifically to those unallocated dollars that were put into that. Uh, proverbial pot that that we designated at the time as kind of, you know, public safety, if you will.
And and so the amount that is in that pot, quote unquote, is, do you know what that amount is right off?
I believe, um, so let me ask you a question and say no, but I know that we, um, I believe we asked if we could put about uh three million in there if I'm not mistaken. But I could, but I can find the exact amount now, but I don't have it in front of me right now, Miss Mayor.
I may continue. And that is, so we we have the three million that's set aside for public safety. But there are some additional funds that we have not been allotted for, period. Is that correct?
Would I have to go back and take a look at that, Ms. Baron? Um, it's been a little while since I.
It it triggered me as we were talking and as I saw it again. And I I want to say that there is a larger number of funds that are available for us to to use. And it's not been allotted for.
Yeah, there was a three million dollars for the public safety and then there may have been, now to get that breakdown of that sheet. There may have been another amount, but it wasn't too large because.
Correct.
I would have asked you for some other opportunities to.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You and then Ms. Newton.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh. Mr. Administrator, uh, how current are these vacancy numbers across the board?
These are pretty current. We just talked to um all of these officials um in the last few weeks during this process.
And uh according to option B, will uh option B eventually take us to option C? In the next couple of years?
Certainly, if our in, if the increase um that we can annually receive, which is about two percent, I think we put it in the in the in the packet. Um, and the the current trend, yes, yes, sir. You you would have to either do some substantial. These are all assumptions. I want to be careful. I'm not an actuary. But based off of our um expenditures and our general annual revenue. That if right now we're saying it takes us two point four million dollars to do this. And that we roughly receive about a little bit less than two million in annual increases, then yes, sir. That math says it will require at some point in time a gross reduction in expenditures or an increase in village.
Oh, currently, tho- these funds that carry us through uh twenty, the rest of twenty-two, well, twenty-two is gone, twenty-three, twenty-four. And then eventually we will have to uh seek option C to be able to maintain this decision.
Some combination, but yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have some additional questions about the vacancies and how they work. And I'm not going to belabor this body with it. I'll I'll get with you later. But I I do just have one question about vacancies and. I'm going to do my best to ask this question. So right now, when there are vacancies that are unfunded or that are unfilled, rather. We have these funds that we can use. I guess my question is. Are those unused salary dollars refunded to the county on the regular? So for example, if the XYZ department has fifty vacancies that are funded. And they only have twenty-five people, do the funds for those other twenty-five dollars automatically come to the county? Does it remain within the agency to adjust? What happens with that?
In your example, if there are fifty positions and twenty-five were filled, uh, and the department was unable to fill the rest. Those funds stay within their that personnel line item. Um, but in general, that money is in the general fund. Um, but the department, so what happens at the end of the the fiscal year? The 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 money is all, generally speaking, as we're that we're talking about right now, um, there were a general fund dollars. That it doesn't go and revert from the pot that it was in to just like a general pot of money. We understand that, for example, in this, using the sheriff's department, that if the pot of money that was allocated for fifty positions was. You know, ten thousand dollars, next year, the allotment at a minimum will be ten thousand dollars.
Okay, following that analogy and the unspent ten thousand dollars because there was not a higher returns to the general fund.
Correct. So that money is still in the general fund.
Okay, thank you. Um, so just, I have some other questions and I'll ask you those later. So just a few other questions. Because we are essentially making long-term planning for taxes. And so we're at fifty percent of our millage right now goes to the sheriff's department. And so as we continue to move up, then that percentage of our millage also goes up. Is the presumption that if we made this approval? That we're, because we're talking about it carrying it, carrying us through twenty twenty-four. Are we really carried through twenty twenty-four? Are there going to be additional salary increase requests from these departments? That then we're also going to be back to option A or option C for how to fund? Or is there a feeling if we do this, we're good?
Very good question. And I believe um Madam Closer is referring to slide on page sixty-three. Uh, so you're right, we've identified here that uh the portion of the general fund. Um, that the sheriff's department, as you as you were asking about in general, um, kind of, you know, subsumes. I cannot tell you that this will be an end-all be-all. Um. We've received salary requests now. I've been here three years for three years. Uh, and we we have not fully uh funded um all this salary request that we've received. So I think this will address you for a period of time. I don't know when that period of time. Ends, but I can tell you to address that specifically. We are currently. Uh, have a uh a vendor that is doing a compensation study specific to pay. Um, which the end result of that is twofold. One, what do we look like compared to the governmental market? Um, as well as uh some related entities that we have to deal with in the private sector. But then also a pay plan that you could budget for and that's on a scale that makes it easier for you to deal with things like this. Right now, we kind of have a range, uh, which which makes it a little bit more fluid. When you're addressing some of these salary-related issues, Ms. Newton.
Okay, I I think that will be great. And to the extent that we can find out, for me, it would be helpful because it's essentially what we're doing right now. Is we're making a taxation decision for the future and it would just be helpful to know. Are we good till twenty twenty-four? Because the fact of the matter is that our new budget cycle actually is going to start in just a few months. So I I would just like to understand where we are so we can make the right decisions. And then finally, this is a question, but it's really a request. Um, you mentioned priorities and and that's really what it is going to boil down to from a budgetary perspective. I would love it. I don't know what we're planning on discussing at the retreat as it relates to budget. But there are a lot of needs that we have in the county that I think need to be addressed. But from an informational perspective, what would be helpful to me is to understand. Who on us, on us, who are all of our millage agencies? Are we required to give millage to these agencies? Yes or no? If yes, what percentage of millage are we paying? Um, well, what are we required to give and what are we paying? Because I I think there are some groups where we're not required to give millage and we do. There are other groups where we're required to give millage where maybe we give a different percentage. And that's just informational for me as we look at how we're going to plan long-term to, you know, pay for the salaries for the people that protect us.
Ms. Newton and 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 Mr. Chair, uh, you all let me know. But um, having these discussions with us for a while now, um, I I reached out to the auditor. Uh, who is uh on the line and prepared to, I think, to kind of address some of those questions. I don't know if. Right now, Ms. Newton, um, you would like that to happen or Mr. Chair, would that be appropriate? But I think he's at least available if you want to have those.
I I am hap- I don't know where we're going with this conversation. I'm happy to wait on that information. If it pleases the body, I'm happy to get it now, but I don't want to belabor it.
Well, I guess my question would be, uh, is how long of an answer? Could, and and look, guys, certainly I love my auditor, okay? Just want to um get an idea of how long it would uh take him to answer that question. Or I guess could he give us the uh abbreviated version in as far as a response to Ms. Newton's question?
Mr. Chair, members of council.
Recognize, Mr. Auditor.
Thank you. Um, in my research, the only village agencies that the council has to fund are the school districts. Uh, and the recreation commission. Uh, there's a minimum of five mills that the recreation commission must be funded at. Uh, and there's a formular for the school districts that uh must be adhered to. But all of the other village agencies are at the pleasure of county council.
That'd answer your question now, Councilwoman Newton.
It is. I'll I'll be in touch with you, Mr. Auditor. Thank you for that answer.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Auditor. Ms. Mackey, you recognized.
Thank you. Um, I guess to follow along to um part of Ms. Newton's statement. And I don't know if this is in this document and maybe I'm not seeing it correctly, but. Is there um, has there been any projection that is done maybe for? You know, the next three, four years, looking at the true impact of this. So, you know, if we funded this. And knowing that this past year, for instance, we gave cost of living increase to county employees, which is something that. I would think this body would want to continue to do, but look, knowing where we are and knowing some of the commitments that we have for the next three to five years. Have we looked at kind of what that projection would be? By actually moving forward with this right now to really understand the true impact? And if we haven't, I would like to see something like that that kind of shows what that really does um to our budget. And then my other question is, um, you know, I think knowing vacancies. Um, it's something that we're seeing across the U.S. in all industries, right? And so I understand salary is a a a piece of that. But have we as a body worked with these departments to develop other creative ways to look at benefits that we could offer? Outside of salary? Have we thought outside the box to say, what are some other things we can do? That would make us slightly more attractive than just increasing salaries to recruit people? And so I I want to know, is there any additional thought, plan that has been put into place besides just a salary increase?
Yes, ma'am. So two, two answers for you. We're really three. No, ma'am, we did not look three years uh to five years ahead. And that's specifically because right now we're actually waiting on the compensation study. So this kind of came up before that happened because some folks are looking to address some things now. Who feel like it's a, it's a critical time for them now. Uh, that will allow us to then extrapolate what it looks like because. Again, re- recall, the idea of that study is to then also have a plan like a a GS schedule. You're familiar with the the government GS schedule so that you know what these years look like. Um, in terms of salary versus benefits, this is one of those things. Uh, and while I don't necessarily work in this field directly anymore, um, as the administrator. Um, has been a thing that's been changing over the the years when it comes to human resource-related issues. Uh, and we are now in a timeframe where people want to know what can I do with what I'm earning? Uh, and we are now in a timeframe where people want to know, what can I do with what I'm earning? And not what my future looks like. Uh, and so, we're in less of a position now to talk about the future than we are with how can I live today? So, we're still battling that issue right now. Uh, and I think, I want to speak on behalf, behalf of these particular officials, but I know all of them have said, you know, this is, uh, a, that's not a good term to use. This is a, a, a monetary issue, it's not the end-all-be-all, but we're losing the game. We're not really even in it at this point, uh, because I can't have a conversation with you about the benefits, because I can't support you financially the way you feel like you need to be supported. So, I don't really want to, I'm not going to have a, a successful interview, because we can't get past that you're not meeting my, my basic minimum, um, salary requirements as a, as an employee of your agency.
Newton. Really quickly, thank, thank you again for putting this together. It is absolutely something that we need to address and, and want to address. My, my question is about timeframe. I know that I still have questions, I don't, I don't know if others do. I know that we are coming to the end of our calendar. Is this the kind of thing that to put into effect requires action tonight? Is it something that can happen at our next meeting, just from, from a timing perspective? Do we have a little bit of runway here?
You do, so it certainly can happen at your, at your next meeting. Um, because remember what I'm, what I'm really saying to you is, if you are considering, well, I believe the only option that would require any kind of action, even at the next meeting, would be option B. Like, option C or A would require some other action, which I don't think you could even take in the timeframe of an, of a next meeting. But fiscal year twenty twenty-four would be what you would be addressing with item B. And so, what we would ask if you were to choose that item is to make a motion so that we have access to those funds, because right now, those funds are in a pot that are not accessible to us to utilize until this body says you may utilize those funds. So, you could make a decision like that, um, at your next meeting if you chose to, and that would be the only time constraint, um, that would really come into play at this point in time.
Thank you.
Mr. Livingston.
My question just asked, I've been answered, thank you.
Oh, so, Mr. Brown. S, um, my interpretation of what's been presented, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, uh, is that for the vacant positions, whether it's the sheriff's department, solicitor's office, public defender's office, Richland County Casa, and EMS, uh, that, uh, dollars that have been allocated for those positions, which are vacant, would be used, uh, in the interim, uh, to increase salaries for, uh, existing, uh, workers, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, and that would, um, cover us, or those departments, if you will, uh, for the remainder of this fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-three, right?
Correct, and that, the assumption is that that wouldn't go into effect until January.
Correct, and so, and then, but you would also, if any action is taken, you would want, uh, this body to authorize the use of the three million dollars in ARPA funds, uh, to cover, I guess, any gaps, if there are any gaps.
Correct.
Uh, assuming that the dollars from those vacant positions are not sufficient, uh, to meet, uh, the, uh, increase, uh, increases rather than salary, right?
That's correct, sir.
And so, and then we get into fiscal year twenty-four. And so, I believe it's, uh, the price tag, uh, for, uh, the requests uh, from our public safety departments is two-point-four million. And so, ARPA dollars would be used, uh, to cover or meet that request for fiscal year, uh, twenty-four, right?
Yes, sir.
And to pay for it going forward, and I'm going to say, you know, two fiscal years from now, that'd be fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, we would have to, th- this body, we have to decide on either, uh, a, uh, budget cuts up to five percent, well, five percent, uh, to the county's operating budget. Thing right now, currently, it's a hundred ninety million, but, you know, but five, but a five percent, uh, budget cut, or increase the mill by one-point-five mills, in essence, raise taxes, right?
Correct.
And so, this body's going to have to decide, maybe we don't make the decision tonight, but although there's a plan before us, uh, to meet, uh, you know, the request in the short term. But long-term, uh, we got a decision to make. Again, we may, we don't make it, I'm assuming we don't make it tonight, well, we can't make that decision tonight. But I guess part of our calculus is going to have to be, uh, how do you pay for this going forward? Um, beyond, you know, the next two fiscal years. Well, that includes this fiscal year and fiscal year twelve, twenty-four, that, that would be correct.
Yes, sir.
All right, and certainly, you know, I, I don't, this is a statement now. Um, I certainly don't question, uh, the, uh, the need uh, that has been expressed by our, our public safety, uh, departments. I think it's important that, you know, we, I guess, we highlight, uh, that this is for public safety departments. Oftentimes, I think the public, when they hear public safety, they think law enforcement. Um, but the county has an entire public safety apparatus that goes beyond, uh, just, uh, policing. So, I certainly don't question the, uh, validity, uh, of the requests. I don't question the need. Um, clearly, there is, uh, you presented us with a plan to meet the short-term needs uh, of these departments, but I think this body's going to have to decide, uh, if we decide, if we go through with this, how do we pay for it going forward? And I know that's the conversation I'm, I'm looking forward to having, uh, with, uh, my colleagues over the next week, or, or, or maybe into the new year. Because again, I, I don't, I don't know when this decision will be made. Um, but I certainly know that going forward, we have to figure out how we're going to pay for this, uh, beyond, uh, you know, beyond, uh, this fiscal year and fiscal year twenty-four.
And Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, so you have a councilman with a hand up, but when you, when you, uh, get a moment, uh, Lori, uh, ACA Thomas, who's, uh, very significant in this process, has her hand raised on the, um, the online monitor.
Okay, Ms. Thomas, before I recognize you, I'm going to recognize Ms. English, okay?
She may answer my question, so she can go.
Okay, uh, Ms. Thomas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate being recognized. Uh, I've heard many people asking about the vacancies. One of the assumptions in this is granted, uh, it's, it's, it's sort of, uh, based on analytics. In speaking with the departments, they could continue to hire new hires at the new rates. We believe that, based on the timing that it takes to hire people in our market, while they wouldn't be able to hire everybody this year, they would be able to make significant impacts to their, um, to their vacancy rates with the calculations that we've done.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Thomas. Uh, Ms. English?
Thank you, um, just wanted to get any, please don't answer this tonight, but what that equates to a millage increase in tax dollars, and you don't have to answer it tonight.
Don't answer that question tonight, so get that to her offline.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments on this item? All right, you recognize, uh, Mr. Livingston.
Seems to me, Mr. Chair, that if, if, if we really going to act, act, make any immediate decision regarding this matter, um, the only option that's, that's, that's kind of valid, this one's going to be option B, because if you took option A and you said you're going to automatically now reduce five percent of operating expenditures, I don't know how that would work. Uh, um, and option C, um, um, if you took that right now and said we're going to, um, um, yeah, increase taxes by one-point, um, five mills, that can't work right now. The only option can really immediately work is option B.
Well, Mr. Livingston, from what I understand, uh, option, uh, A and option C, that's not, that wouldn't be applicable at, at this moment.
Right.
Uh, that option B would, uh, from, from following you, Mr. Brown, uh, that would be, uh, would be applicable in fiscal year twenty-four. And so, for this current fiscal year, I believe the recommendation is to allow these departments to take the funds that they have for the current vacancies, and, uh, just sort of shift, if you will, those dollars, uh, toward the existing workers and increase their pay. Would that be an accurate, uh, description, uh, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir, that is an accurate description, and the only, only caveat I said to that was that if there is any, you know, um, number there that did not account for, we wanted to have the ability to draw.
The ARPA dollars.
That's correct, yes, sir.
That makes sense, Mr. Livingston.
That's what I was saying, okay, that's your luck. Um, one other question too is.
Sure, go ahead.
When we make a decision about this, and this more of a legal one, is, are all these options going to require three readings of the public hearing, or, or any one reading versus three readings, um?
Mr. Chair.
Recognized. Right.
Uh, when, well, when the time comes for A and C, it definitely would. Uh, as far as B, I think that because it's the ARPA funds, it's, it's, it's kind of already been, uh, dedicated to public safety. So, A and B, I mean, A and C definitely would.
Well, Mr. Wright, that begs another question. Uh, since we, we voted on the budget, uh, back in June, and as part of that budget, we voted for three million dollars in ARPA funds to be earmarked for public safety needs. So, would that require any additional action by this body? Or would, uh, the administrator have, is he already, uh, authorized, uh, to, uh, allocate these funds toward, uh, use these funds to meet the request, um, that had been presented?
Right, I believe the ARPA funds have already, he has the authority to allocate the ARPA funds.
Questions or comments from the body?
It's the reason for my observation about, um, B. It's because if, if, if we going to, um, decision have an impact, um, or to, it's something we could, if, if you put it off a no vote now, at least it's something you can, you can, you can still do before the end of the year. If it's just one reading and that kind of thing, is the point I was getting at, or no reading versus three, three, then public hearing, I'm trying to get that point clear.
Sure, I got you. And for me, Mr. Livingston, I think, um, if action is taken tonight, or if we take it next week, I guess, you know, it's important for the body to understand that at some point, w- we're going to be at either option A or option C, uh, uh, once we get to fiscal year. Uh, so, I don't want to put any pressure on anyone to vote tonight, uh, or take any action tonight, if they feel like they may need some more time, uh, to consider, uh, you know, paying for this going forward. Grab your microphone, so.
That maybe it was, I, I think I was, my hand and mic were resonating with, for me, I, I think I see where, where this path is going, but for me, having taken in this information and had this discussion, I would just appreciate, uh, a teeny bit of time, um, so that we can address how we're going to make these long-term plans, but absolutely in support of paying our, our emergency workers, and we still appear to have time to do it. So, I would appreciate that opportunity. Mr. Chair.
Recognize, Ms. Barron.
Uh, thank you, so, as it does appear that we're going to hold this off for a little bit, uh, or prayerfully until next week, um, will we, some of these unad, some of these questions that were not addressed tonight, will we be able to, will we get an update from the administrator? So that, then again, this can come before this body again?
Well, I, I would certainly urge my colleagues, if you have, you know, any questions that have not been answered tonight, or if you think of some additional questions upon, um, departing the meeting tonight, to certainly get with Mr. Brown, or to get with, uh, you know, ACA Thomas, and get answers, uh, to those questions, yes. Uh, Mr. Brown, anything additional?
No, sir, with that being, uh, said, that ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Next item on the agenda is item ten, which is a report of the clerk of council. Madam Clerk, you're recognized.
I don't have anything to report this time, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item eleven, which is a report of the chair. At this time, the chair does not have any updates or announcements at this time. Next item on the agenda is item twelve, which is our open and closed public hearings, uh, item twelve A. So, authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of avalerum taxes, an incentive agreement by and between Richland County, South Carolina, the Right Dose Corporation and TRC Propco, Inc., to provide for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other related matters. That public hearing is now open, Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
No, Mr. Chair, no one signed up.
That public hearing is now closed. Next item on the agenda is item twelve B, authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of avalerum taxes, an incentive agreement by and between Richland County, South Carolina, and Epic Properties LLC, a company formerly known to the county as Project Coyote, to provide for payment and, payment of a fee in lieu of taxes, rather, authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other related matters. That public hearing is now open, Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
No, Mr. Chair.
That public hearing is now closed. Next item on the agenda is item thirteen, which is the approval of consent items, item thirteen A.
Mr. Chair.
You recognize, Mr. Malinowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve all the consent items, which are items thirteen A through thirteen G.
Second.
Mr. Chair.
Properly second.
Uh.
I'm sorry, you recognized, uh, Mr. Rasio?
Uh, friendly amendment, may I remove the, uh, ordinance, the B, um, ordinance for amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter sixteen? Um, sorry, the residential rental property registration regu- regulations.
Amendment to the motion is, uh, and to, so your amendment is to approve items thirteen A, C, D, E, F, and G. Mr. Malinowski, accept a friendly amendment?
All right, so, um, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item thirteen B, an ordinance amending the Richland County Code of Ordinances, Chapter sixteen, licenses and miscellaneous business regulations by the addition of Article seven, uh, residential rental property registration and regulations. I entertain a motion.
Uh, I would like to move to approve.
Second.
Properly, uh, move to properly second, all right?
And I just, may I just?
Yeah, you're recognized.
Um, so, I just wanted to be super-duper clear. I really appreciate staff and council working on this, development and services on, on this. I know a lot of people will be very relieved when we have this. Um, wanted to be super-clear that our ordinance does include, uh, does cover nuisance offenses such as noise, um, that would, uh, fall under their, the jury, and the, or, sorry, and the offenses that would fall under our code enforcement officers, so that when our residents have, you know, um, pouches in the yard and, and things like that, that will fall under this ordinance as well. Just wanted to be crystal clear.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Horatio, any additional, uh, discussion or questions? You recognize, Mr. Pew?
Does any of these consent items need to be reconsidered, sir?
All the items that are able to be, please, sir.
But before we get to those, Mr. Pew, let's get this vote on, I don't, but I'm with you. All right, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Sixty seconds.
Ms. Newton is recognized.
As the original maker of the motion for this absentee landlord ordinance, just let me say, thank you, done.
You recognize, Mr. Malinowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we reconsider items, uh, C, D, E, F, and G.
Second.
Second.
Move to properly second, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski?
No.
You?
No.
My brought, um, Livingston?
Oh.
Horatio?
No.
Joe Walker? Baron?
No.
O'Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Next item on the agenda is item fourteen, third reading items, uh, fourteen A, authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of avalerum taxes, an incentive agreement by and between Richland County, South Carolina, the Right Dose Corporation and TRC Propco, Incorporated, to provide for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other related matters. I entertain a motion. authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other related matters. I entertain a motion.
Move, Mr. Chair.
It's their second. Let's move to properly second. Any discussion? Uh, you recognize Mr. Malinowski?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Rubel, was this the one formerly known as Project Wellness? Thank you.
Additional discussion or questions? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item fourteen B, authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of avalerum taxes and incentive agreement by and between Richland County, South Carolina, and Epic Properties LLC, a company formerly known to the county as Project Coyote, to provide for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other related matters. I entertain a motion.
Second.
Move to properly second. Any discussion? You recognize Mr. Malinowski?
Hey, Mr. Chair, Mr. Rubel, we were sent this updated agenda documentation for this item. Is there anything in there that's greatly different from the original one a year and a half ago? The answer, it was head shaking. No, thank you.
Are there this discussion or questions? All right, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item fifteen, second reading items, fifteen A, authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of avalerum taxes agreement by and between Richland County, South Carolina, and Project Academy, to provide for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other related matters. I entertain a motion.
Move, Mr. Chair.
Their second.
Thank you.
It's moved, it's been moved to properly second. Any discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item fifteen B, authorizing the expansion of the boundaries of the I-77 corridor, regional industrial park, jointly developed with Fairfield County to include certain property located in Richland County, authorizing the execution and delivery of an infrastructure credit agreement by and among Richland County, South Carolina, and Project Cheers, to provide for certain infrastructure credits and other related matters. I entertain a motion.
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Second, move to properly second. Any discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item fifteen C, authorizing the expansion of the boundaries of the I-77 corridor, regional industrial park jointly developed with Fairfield County to include certain property located in Richland County, the execution and delivery of a public infrastructure credit agreement to provide for public infrastructure credits to a company identified for the time being as Project Green Arrow and other related matters. I entertain a motion.
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
All right. Need a second?
Second.
It's been moved to properly second. Any discussion? Mr. Melanowski, you recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just would like to know if on page three twenty, where it gives a land description, we have that one by third reading filled in?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and also, um, on page three twenty-one, under the description of the public infrastructure, it mentions sewer. Is that something that will be provided by Richland County, the City of Columbia, East Richland, who?
Uh, the City of Columbia.
City of Columbia. Okay, so we don't need any uh, letters to or from them. Uh, that's all. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Questions or discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Livingston? Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
No.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item fifteen D, authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of avalerum taxes agreement by and between Richland County, South Carolina, and Project Golden Eagle, to provide for payment uh, of a fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other related matters. I entertain a motion.
Move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Properly second. Any discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item sixteen, which is the report of the Economic Development Committee, that will be provided by the Honorable Paul Livingston. Mr. Livingston, you recognized.
Item sixteen A, an ordinance authorizing the option and acquisition of uh, certain properties located in Richland County and other matters there related. The committee's recommendation is for um, first reading approval. This is, I, I, we talked about regarding the purchase of, of option on properties um, in the southeast Richland County area.
Per the recommendation of the committee. Any discussion or questions? Uh, you recognize Mr. Malinowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, this is sixteen A we're dealing with here. Page three sixty-four, item number three, option consideration. It says within A, within five days of the effective date as herein after defined. I never saw the effective date defined anywhere in here. Did I miss it? I know you've got option date, but I didn't see that defined either.
I, I think we're waiting to get through the approvals before we put the date.
Okay, so that's forthcoming then?
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, any chance, since this looks like it could be something that in the future, after reading this, may need a rezoning, that we could get a, an actual map like they put it zoning public hearing, so we see exactly the property we're referring to here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And on page three sixty-five, which is your page two, uh, at the very top line, it says the date such notification is mailed or hand delivered. I think we maybe need to say what type of mail we're doing.
Yes, sir.
Uh, okay. And my last uh, page in here was on page three sixty-eight of the agenda. Uh, the very top paragraph B, where it talks about the uh, optionee agrees to reimburse optionor for all claims demands actions, and it goes on for everything. Uh, litigation, the cost of expensive removing or bonding over any liens affecting the property. I don't understand why we would pay for somebody else's liens if they have them there. They're getting paid twice.
Yeah, I, I don't think I understand that either. An apology. I can ask our attorney, our real estate attorney.
Yeah, I'd like to get an answer for that, please. And also, uh, if you could, unless you feel this is something that needs to be put out there right now, I'm sure that based on the uh, TMS numbers, we can find out what this is zoned, but I'd kind of like to know what the intended use would be as far as a future zoning, so that we have an idea, is this a possibility even?
Yes, sir. We, we had some conversations about it being uh, zone EMP, Employment District in the future. Some of the property would clearly be best utilized as industrial, it's between two Class One railroads. However, parts of the property are facing Garner's Ferry Road or more rural in, in nature, and probably would be uh, designated a different direction or, you know, best, best use.
Thank you, Director Rubel. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You, Mr. Malin- additional questions or discussion? You recognize Ms. Newton? Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, uh, is there a motion on the floor?
The lady's recommendation.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, that's, Mr. Melon, Mr. Malinowski lost me when he referenced a particular paragraph. All right, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski? You?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
No.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Approved.
Now the floor, Mr. Livingston.
Chair, item sixteen B, a resolution approving and consenting to the sale of property by Unum Corporation, Unum Life Insurance Company of America, and Corona Life and Accident Insurance Company, um, partial um, assigned um, by assignors to the TSO, uh, twelve hundred Corona Drive Boulevard Retail LP and at TSO, twelve hundred Corona, um, Corona Life Boulevard, uh, LP, um, to, to fee of agreements by and between uh, signors at Richland County, South Carolina, um, this is just simply transferring property from um, one company to another, and that, and the committee recommends approval.
Per the recommendation of the committee, uh, any questions or discussion? There'd be a none from Mr. Malinowski. Uh, please take the vote, Madam Clerk.
Malinowski? Pew?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item six, sixteen C, authorizing the First Amendment, um, uh, of, of that certain fee agreement by and between uh, Richland County, South Carolina, and Eastover Solar LLC, relating to without limitation further investment of the, of the project, the increase of the um, phase termination date and the update of the fee payment schedule and amount and other related matters. The committee's recommendation is for approval for first reading.
Per the recommendation of the committee, any discussion or questions? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
That completes the report of the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston. Next item on the agenda is item seventeen, which is a report of the Rules and Appointments Committee, that will be provided by the Honorable Gretchen Baron, Councilwoman, you recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, we have several notifications of appointment. The first one is seventeen A, one with the Community Relations Council, one vacancy. The committee is recommending Chanel Simmons, which is in.
Per the recommendation of the committee, any discussion or questions? You recognize, uh, Mr. Livingston?
Are any of these ones listed, um, incumbents?
They are not, sir.
Thank you.
Questions or discussion? None. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Now the floor, Ms. Baron.
Thank you. Our next appointment is number two for the Music Festival Commission. We have one vacancy. The committee is recommending D, Stephen Rebell.
Per the recommendation of the committee, uh, any questions or discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski? Pew?
Yes.
McBride, um, Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Now the floor, Ms. Baron.
Item number three for recommend, for appointment is for the Richland Library Board. We have six vacancies, and they are as follows, C, Chelsea Richards, H, Jonathan Robertson, K, Lee Rembo, incumbent, N, Aaron Johnson, incumbent, U, Cynthia Cox, and V, Berlin Moses.
Recommendation of the committee, any questions or discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Livingston? Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Now the floor, Ms. Baron.
Next appointment is for, for the Township Auditorium Board. There are two vacancies. The committee is recommending B, Frank Robinson, and E, Dr. Trevin Capers.
Per the recommendation of the committee, uh, any discussion or questions? There'd be-
B, and I, I said Trevin, Trevin Capers.
It's B. Additional questions or discussion? Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski? Pew?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Baron. Next item on the agenda is item eighteen, report of the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee, that will be provided by the Honorable Jessica Mackey, Madam Vice Chair, you recognized.
Thank you. Um, the Transportation, um, Committee met and recommends um, awarding the construction contract um, awarding the construction contract to the lowest responsive and reasonable bidder for reservicing package T to Palmetto Corp. of Conway.
For the recommendation of the committee, any questions or discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski. Pew.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Terisha.
Yes.
Jo- Joe Walker. Baron.
Yes.
O Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Mackey, staff.
Uh, thank you. The next item is Lake Todd Summit Credit Sales. Uh, the Transportation Ad-Hoc Committee, uh, recommends approval of the Lake Todd Summit Development's request to purchase, uh, wetland credits at the amount listed in the packet.
For the recommendation of the committee, any questions or discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Terisha.
Yes.
O Walker. Uh, I'm sorry, Joe Walker. Baron.
Yes.
O Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton. Motion approved.
Uh, that concludes the Transportation Ad-Hoc Committee's report.
Next item on the agenda is item nineteen.
Mr. Chair.
Other items? You recognize, Ms. Barron?
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to move to approve items A, B, and C.
Point of order, I'm sorry, I, we spoke at the same time. I was wondering if items eighteen A or B require reconsideration.
Yes.
Yes, they do. Thank you, Ms. Newton.
Well, since I believe Ms. Barron has a motion on the floor, so let's finish with Ms. Barron's motion and then we can, we'll go back. All right. Alanowski agrees with me. All right, so has it been, Ms., um, Barron's motion been seconded yet?
Seconded.
Okay, any discussion or questions?
Yes, I have, I have a question. Sorry, because I was trying to raise my point of order.
That's okay.
Was your motion for A through C, Ms. Barron?
Right.
Thank you.
Additional questions or discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the, uh, vote, please.
Malinowski. Pew.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Terisha.
Yes.
Joe Walker. Baron.
Yes.
O Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Both to reconsider?
It's reconsideration of items nineteen A, B, and C.
Unless we can do eighteen and nineteen together.
All right.
Second?
Oh, it's a motion to reconsider items eighteen A and B and also items nineteen A, B, and C. It's been seconded by Ms. Newton. Uh, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski. Pew.
No.
Livingston.
No.
Terisha.
No.
Joe Walker. Baron.
No.
O Walker.
No.
Mackey.
No.
English.
No.
Newton.
No.
Motion fails.
Next item on the agenda is item twenty, which is our executive session that takes us back to item, uh, six A on the agenda, which is, uh, pertains to comprehensive, uh, council rules. At this time, I entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Thank you.
Should we properly second discussion? Mr. Malinowski, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I realize that the purpose, because we're getting, uh, legal advice, but we're talking about the rules, so I'd like the attorney to let us know. The rules always become public. Is there anything sensitive that we should not have made public at this point in time?
Recognize, Mr. Wright?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, well, I don't give, I'm not giving legal advice in public, so that's why executive session allows for it. So if you want to discuss it, once you come out, you can, but legal advice needs to be in executive session.
Question or questions? None, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski.
No.
Pew.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Terisha.
No.
Joe Walker. Baron.
Yes.
O Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right, we'll be in executive session. Stay downstairs.
Move to come out of executive session.
It's been moved to properly second. Uh, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Baron? Or Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
For the record, we went into executive session with respect to item six A, uh, which is for the comprehensive, uh, council rules. We received legal advice on that item, uh, and no action was taken and went into executive session pursuant to, uh, South Carolina Code thirty dash four dash, uh, seventy. All right, next item on the agenda is item twenty-one, which is the, uh, motion period, item twenty-one A, which is the, uh, motion to amend council rules, uh, rule four point one, ad hoc committees. Uh, this is a motion by the Honorable Bill Malinowski. Ms. Malinowski, are you opposed to this item being taken up next week?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, when we make whatever other changes are recommended for our rules, we could just include that one. That would be fine.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is item twenty-one B, which is to the direct the administrator to create regulations for the operation of short-term rentals, uh, in incorporated Richland County. Those regulations would be listed as an amendment to the current ordinance relating to residential rental property regulations, similar to the absentee landlord ordinance that is currently being considered. Consideration should be given to licensing, safety measures, number of occupants allowed, effects on infrastructure such as sewer and water, EMS and law enforcement potential response and not having them create a nuisance in the neighborhood. Mr. Malinowski is the author of that motion. Mr. Malinowski, you opposed to this item being sent to the Development and Services Committee?
Uh, yeah, if, yeah, I discussed this one with the attorney previously, and I believe this was the language to go to a committee.
Right.
Yes, I think it's the appropriate language. Uh, the only possible issue is that it is dealing with, um, a land use regulation, uh, which maybe on the chapter twenty-six, which would be planning commission.
Well, I kind of was looking at it and trying to tailor it after what we just did with the, uh, absentee landlord ordinance. We made new rules and regulations. It came out of committee after quite a lengthy time in discussion and finally got here.
Right, yeah, it's a little, it's a little different as far as with that, um, and this specifically saying what you can and cannot do specifically with your land or your property.
Let me ask this question, Mr. Malinowski, uh, ask this question of Mr. Wright, and you can tell me if you oppose to it, Mr. Malinowski, but, um, would it be possible we can just take this item up perhaps next week, Mr. Malinowski, and in the interim, that'd give legal time to, uh, delve into this a little further and this request a little further to see if there are any.
Well, and Mr. Wright, Attorney Wright feels this needs to go to planning commission, then my motion from the last meeting was very similar to this, and it's already on its way there. I was trying to restructure the wording, so it could have just gone to one of our own in-house committees, standing committees.
Right, well, I, I think the previous one specifically talked about zoning, so I think that.
Right, and that's why I eliminated it on this one.
So I think that's, I think either way, it is dealing with restriction on land use.
Absentee landlord ordinance did not restrict it land use.
Now, that's landlord tenant type issues. That's, so it's, it's not a little different from land use.
All right, well, if you say it's supposed to go to the planning commission, then, uh, just go ahead and send it there.
Into the planning commission. All right, next item on the agenda is item twenty-two adjournment.
Adjourned.
All right, all right, it's been moved to properly second. That is non-debatable. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa? Baron?
Yes.
Or Walker?
Uh, yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?